So how was your vacation there, boss?
Good.
Good?
Yep, four thousand miles. It's a lot of driving.
Big spend?
Yeah, gas in California, six eighty-nine.
I gasped my diesel truck up and I said, "I'm just gonna leave it here and walk home."
Diesel in California is cheaper than gas.
It used to be here too, you know that.
Yeah, it used to be. And we got, we stayed at a town in northern California. Less than twenty minutes from the Oregon border and I thought, I said, "Oh, I'll go gas before we take off." And we had breakfast the next morning and waitress said, we talked a little bit, she said, "Well, don't fill here. Drive into Oregon, it's a buck and a half cheaper." It was a buck twenty cheaper.
I hope you tipped waiters.
Yeah, she said, "We should have ate breakfast first."
Don't you have the gas buddy app?
No.
Well?
I was gonna make you almost a millennium.
I know, I used it when I moved to Arizona last year.
After I left California, I started using it. This gas was here. Even in Montana, it was...
Montana is usually a lot cheaper, especially if you hit Billings.
What'd you say about Billings? It's cheaper?
Usually it is.
Now, we took...
History-wise, it usually was.
We decided to come, go north of Missoula. Come home in northern Montana for a change. Don't ever have to drive that road again.
Think you're running some rocks on this one?
There's miles and miles of nothing.
Some people would say the same thing about North Dakota.
That's more sparse up there around Haver.
That's railroad country.
That's a missed over. More sparse?
I know. Sparsely populated. Never said I was a linguist. I use German words. We just make them up.
The German?
Yeah.
All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting in Mercer County Commission to order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, board members, I'd like to add solar ordinance.
In other business?
Other business. Be a quick question.
Probably should put portfolio updates on there too. Any other changes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The agenda has amended.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eliza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Eliza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. We have several minutes to approve. Let's start with the September sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, prior to that, I'd like to make a note of the handout that I gave you guys.
Okay.
The very bottom sentence. I think we need to be diligent of that. The question arises whether or not, if we're not following that, whether we're having a legal meeting. And I sent that to the state's attorney for his interpretation. But that's from the North Dakota sentry code, opinion from the Attorney General.
Any questions, comments on the September sixteenth minutes?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the September sixteenth minutes, is there a second?
For discussion, I'll second that.
Standing by Marv, any discussion? Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne? I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, September twenty-first minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept as written.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion, corrections, or additions to the September twenty-first minutes? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, September thirtieth minutes?
Whoop, twenty-one.
We just did twenty-one.
Public hearing. Minutes.
There's two September twenty-ones.
There's two twenty-ones?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Uh, okay, the second set of September twenty-ones.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
I move to accept the minutes of the public hearing, September twenty-one.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion, corrections, or additions to the public hearing on September twenty-first? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Now, September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, for some reason, I didn't have copied, I didn't read it prior to, so give me a second, please. Oh, I did two readers. I move to accept as September thirtieth.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Wayne, any discussion, corrections, or additions to September thirtieth minutes? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, that motion passes. October fifth.
There are two drafts here, I would like to make that known, we do not want to use the draft that was mailed to us. Want to use the draft that was presented at this meeting today. The correction on there was, a vote wasn't recorded, and now it is corrected. So I move to accept the October fifth, twenty-twenty-two Mercer County Commission meetings as presented at the commission meeting.
Okay, motion by Marv to accept the minutes from October fifth, um, as presented at the meeting this morning, is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconding by Wayne. Any discussion, correction, or additions to the October fifth meeting minutes? Seeing no discussion, Marv?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. That gets us up to date on minutes, uh, next is approval of bills.
Yep, I've seen it.
Okay.
I mean, I read it.
Now we go through the bills.
Yeah.
Every commissioner looks at every bill. Takes about a half hour. I always say that because I got called one time by a Mercer County resident about, uh, they go over the bills, and I said, "No, every commissioner sees every bill." "Why? You look at everything?" I said, "Yeah, watch the video." I ended that call.
Did they call back in a holiday?
Oh, Travis.
Don't worry, it's on redial.
Email. It's like I'm in work or something.
We rate importance on, uh, on the high real.
Oh, yeah? From spam? From spam? She's a kick in the pants, isn't she?
Done today, yeah? I deleted eighty-three of them this morning. Here's one I like. Don't open it.
No.
The document is great.
Garbage, garbage, garbage.
It's in my trash.
Yeah. Yep. Sometimes even when I delete it though, I'm like, is it gonna open it? Now you have virus.
All I need is the winch on front of the trailer.
Previously.
I suppose we could just put the skid steer on front and pull it up with that.
I haven't seen them yet. I haven't seen them, but...
I have a question for you guys. Have we ever considered sending out for bids on towing? I said, have we ever considered sending out to other places for towing? Typically, we go to one person, and some of these expenses seem really high for a short distance.
We used to go through multiple, um, entities, but now they're not available, so we only get that one source. Unfortunately, no person has...
It's called a monogopoly.
Thought that answered your question, Marv?
Absolutely did.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
I think our only other option at this point is to call in somebody from Bismarck, and that's just... Very expensive.
I'm about ready to buy a little... It's not a hard job. Unless it's a subway or something totally different. As long as it can be lowered.
We made lots of calls at three o'clock in the morning, you wanna get up at three o'clock in the morning?
I usually am. Wait till you're my age.
I think that's why downtown decided not to, because he was one guy that's mostly getting... After a while.
How much is the basketball, how much she got? About that much.
You're lucky. Maybe Liza can answer me this one, sandals?
You have to have something on their feet.
Besides socks, besides socks.
Nice short answer, thank you.
Fungus.
No, piece of glass somewhere.
Oh, thank goodness.
They take good care of them, don't worry.
Gave me a big political answer, but oh, no.
Jean, you know what you need to do if you wanted to get those services?
No, they don't charge you for them. Especially when one size fits all.
Right?
They changed that to one size fits most.
Politically correct, one size fit most.
Yeah, well, they got in trouble for that, one size fits all.
I saw it. I saw it, look in the other page, look in the other page. The other page says individually wrapped.
I'm done with that one.
Curious.
Now, don't.
I figured, I knew what you guys were talking about.
How about the fourth line and then the sixth line?
It's...
Can paper get access to that?
It's already in the pile now, makes it if I can.
If you want it, you truly can ask.
I'd like to see how you would word that one.
It'll say who it's to and the amount, but do you want me to list the line item?
No.
Okay.
Give me Eliza an answer, no.
I can elaborate if we really need to, Jean.
No. Thank you for your answer.
And then we'll ask Jean how he's feeling, fine.
Fine. Just makes you wonder. You don't have to buy your preserves coffee. I want coffee.
I don't even think they can buy coffee on the canteen. I don't even think they can buy coffee on the canteen. Is that a commissary?
Buy me sandals.
No.
Buy me gourds too.
No caffeine. There's not even a problem there.
That's for Hamster America, Troy.
Yeah. Be the first thing I do. Can't even imagine. Oh, 'cause it's sixteen, twenty-four, eight, three, that's why.
I'm gonna have to switch hands when we get to that bill.
Are you cramping?
Just complain it.
It was the year end, so they decided to stack up.
Say to me at this point, but I can't understand.
Don't say that here. I have to voice an objection. I said, I would have to voice an objection. Are there those things that you're doing?
These are prepay. Reimbursement for the uniform, there was some lottery stuff, payroll. Doesn't look like a prepay. It's not this, this is the check number. That's a request for payment. Can I look at that? Yep.
Question on these, I see that he's approving a whole bunch of vouchers. And why aren't these passed through the commission?
They already were.
They were the twenty-first, or from...
Past days.
Past, yeah. I think, what were you saying, that she was...
She, she already went through and she had them all done. And then when I was going through and finishing and filling out the back of the voucher, it felt so, I could file them, I noticed that they weren't signed.
Are you saying these were presented to the meeting prior to this, presented to the board?
As far as I know, yes.
Can you see, we'll get our notes and see that? Yeah.
It's just a regular...
What's the date?
We got our minutes right in front of us, we should be able to pick it up, right?
Yep.
Because it says September.
She, yeah, it's when I started.
What's the number on there? Yeah.
I'll let you look at it. Because we just made the comment, we see all the bills, so I'm just curious how these never got signed, if we looked at them.
Unless I forgot to stop and scan, I know I usually stop afterwards and...
I've never seen you miss that, so it appears that...
Well, I have before, but...
Yeah, because this is, the last ones they have are four, six, nine, one, eight, through four, six, nine, two, four, six, nine, three, four, five.
So do we have more numbers to record here than the bank?
Depends on the day.
Is this the final? Does that hazard mitigation plan?
Yeah.
I know we've made a payment before, but I just...
Yeah. There she is, you guys.
Carmen, just in time, is this the last, last bill for KLJ, or will there be more for that? Hazard mitigation plan.
Well, I know...
Good morning, Carmen.
Right at you, right away, you're going to get sent out and say...
Yeah, it's okay. Keeps me on my toes.
That should be listed here though, right?
Right, four, seven, five, sixty.
Let's see if we can find that.
But yeah, if it was missed assigned, that would be why there'd be so many. Was that a, sorry, a lump sum or was that a...
I'm gonna say, I don't know, because, um, once it's all completed, then I'm gonna see, but, yeah, I gotta wait. And then once we get all the bills, then...
Thank you. Good job.
I will put them in for the mitigation grant, that will repay us back.
Yeah, they just...
So we have to wait until it is finished, so yeah, I'm gonna say, I don't...
Okay. I, I mean, I wasn't really questioning the bill, I was just like, because it didn't have any of the previous ones on there, I was just wondering where we were at.
But actually, on my quarterly report at the end, I do have a list of what has been paid out.
Okay.
What?
Ever re-tore your tires?
No.
Looks like Patrick did.
Toddie?
I'm gonna be twenty-ninety, Todd was two-sixty. Approximately, but you...
Go over this, Carmen.
Thanks, Jean.
There's a reason for that.
Good.
Well, I was gonna fill out a form because I haven't filled one out forever. I was gonna use that as an example, but I could, I'd get the bills on order if I knew that.
Man, that's pretty sloppy.
Well, it would've worked for me, as long as it... I get confused. On the top of this is Mercer County Highway Department. But the bill is for the weed board. Mercer County Highway Department has a different fund number than weed board. I'm just curious why they're using this form.
Who's sending the invoice?
Jamie Bouchon is the...
It's from the Highway Department to the weed board.
Weed board that fill gasoline is the last...
At the county shop?
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought we were doing good, now this one came in.
Yeah, right.
What's wrong with sandals, doesn't it?
Right. They gotta have their tests, not only do you have to fix them, but you also have to pay us.
Yeah.
Perhaps. I was sort of remembering, last time we looked at it, we were like, look how good we're doing, we only have a couple, and then we had like a whole.
Yeah. And, uh...
They called that a turntable switch?
Yeah.
And two more, I'm just down here.
I know.
Ouch.
I believe the day was DOT, it was due, there was some...
Zero past, as part of their, other, other job description.
Well, shall we pause the bills and go to the zoning emergency? I think we're gonna pause with the bills and we'll move on to the zoning and emergency management. So we kinda stay on schedule. Morning, Sydney.
Good morning.
What do you have for us today?
I have those redemptions that you guys need to set the minimum price on for Sam.
Okay.
And I just did it the same that we have in the past, I did the three years from twenty nineteen to twenty-one with the back taxes and specials. I did the twenty-twenty-two estimates, and that's with the, based on the value that we had, and then the specials that the cities gave me with the specials and whatever's owed on there, and that's just for the one year. So of course, anybody who would buy them would have to call the cities for the balance of the specials, and then the sheriff fee. And so then the blue, the blue is the minimum prices that I had on each lot for her auction that she'll have in November.
So the twenty-two estimate would be the taxes that we would assess this year for next year's budget?
That will be, them are the, them are gonna do the, due this year.
Oh, okay.
So the nineteen through twenty-one are all the back taxes that are due already. And the twenty-twenty-two are the ones that statements will be, that Dawn will be running in December. You know, the other ones are already, are already delinquent, nineteen through twenty-one.
So the blue is the total?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of all of that together, because the sheriffs will have to go serve the papers. Is the fifty-dollar fee, but the twenty-twenty-two estimate, them haven't been printed yet. That's why I don't.
And then the specials would be the specials that would be due this year?
Yep.
Okay.
What's the next step if they don't pay these taxes?
Then Sam will have the auction in November, and people can come and bid on them. That's why you're setting this minimum price, that that's the least they can go for, if somebody comes in and bids at that auction in November.
If we don't get bids for them, then what's the next step?
Then I believe she opens it up to the cities can buy them back for a dollar, I think.
Yeah, I believe that there's...
And then we wipe the taxes, put the specials stay on specials. And that's why we offer it to the cities, because the cities are the ones paying the specials if nobody pays them.
Right.
And that's November of this year.
Right.
November fifteenth.
Like, the owners have until the day of the, right, the minute before the auction starts to come and pay this minimum price. And if they don't, then it goes up for auction.
Correct.
And they could've avoided this if they just would've paid nineteen's taxes before this point?
By October first.
Yeah.
They could've paid nineteen's taxes.
And then you don't add one year, right?
The one year.
Just kept moving every three years, then pay?
Well, then it would be on the next year.
Just one year.
You just have to pay.
Just keep moving.
So they had to pay nineteen's taxes.
Before October first, they wouldn't be on this list.
But now they have to pay all three of those years back taxes before the auction.
Thank you for the explanation.
It can be a total...
That's also so that people who listen in just get this all clarified so that they they understand also.
Right.
So do we need a motion to...
Approve the minimum price?
Accept the minimum.
Is that what we need to do?
Approve these, approve these for auction at the minimum price, is that what you're saying?
I believe you have to, you have to approve the minimum price.
Yeah. So Sam knows where to start the auction at. And then if she doesn't get that, then that's when we do the other stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what happens then, really. I don't have anything to do with the auction.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minimum price for back taxes on these properties as presented.
Okay, motion by Marv to approve the minimum price as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? As, as we kinda stated, if they pay up to, prior to the auction starting, then the property gets removed from the auction.
Right.
Yeah. But then if not, then it's up for auction, and then if it doesn't get sold, then we go to the next step where we...
Go to the next, yeah.
And you said the auction date is November fifteenth, correct?
Yeah.
At what time? I'll have to double check on that, okay.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. Thanks, Sydney.
We're locked up to auction.
All right, Carmen.
Okay, the first thing I needed to request is a motion to approve the mitigation plan adopted into, so the motion is to approve the updated Mercer County mitigation plan. Pending the final, and I'm gonna give you a copy of that and just so you guys can look at it, so pending final approval by the state and FEMA. Right now, they've got it, they got it two weeks ago, so I'm expecting the...
Confirmation, Sam.
So it's basically the last step. So then Bula will be able to, you know, I know at the end of October, they had to project, so they had to put in there. And I believe that they're there. They told us they would be fine, they can put it in, the whole FEMA grants. So, that went well, but I need Mercer County, and I'm going around to all the cities this month to get approval for this, because this is the last step in completing this plan. And once we get you guys to approve it and sign it in all the cities, then I will put those documents into the final plan, and then I'm gonna make, print up copies for every department.
And then how long does this plan last, Carmen?
Five years, but like any plan, though, it is a living plan.
So it can be amended?
Usually in December, the L E T C meeting, we review plans, and this would be one of them, and it would have updates, and we make those updates, and every five years, then we'll go through this process.
Okay. For those that wanna take the motion?
Whoever wants to make the motion, you should have the proper... Jean's been doing really good today.
He's volunteered.
Let's just have a question.
Motion to approve the updated Mercer County multi-hazard mitigation plan pending final approval by the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services and the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Okay, motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you. So I'm gonna have you sign this, you're the chairman, and then I'm gonna have Sam sign it, and then I'll take that, so I got it all together.
I worded that correctly, didn't I?
You did very well, Jean.
Okay, so the next thing is this fire. Because of the high winds, we put on a fire evacuation. And like, every time, you know, we've done this in the past. I go, you know, when we have a high winds like we did, and it was consistent, I usually want it on because I wanna open up that emergency fund, but so we put it on, I contact the order, I contact the chairman, and we put it on. So this commission, either we're gonna approve it or rescind it. This is the official approval. Okay, and the only reason I bring this up, it isn't just that, let's do a motion again. I've gotten feedback from the fire chiefs. Well, not a lot, but, but still, it makes us think that and this is the correspondence that we shouldn't have a fire ban on unless we really need it. It's a three-day event that wind, and we haven't had any fires. So I've got six copies, and I'm just gonna need one sound, I don't know. But anyway, this is a correspondence, so you guys, basically, can see, this is a fire ban, and then I got a really good email from the Bula Fire Chief considering different policy. It, it confuses people when we're always tied to index. But you know, when you think about it, last year, you know, it was so dry, we really didn't have any fires, people are being safe. I know that the farmers, they've got, they mow off their combines now, just try to head them. And I, I kinda agree with Eli on this, that and people are being safe and thinking, because when those high winds too, we really didn't have anything. And every once in a while, you are gonna have fires, but that's just, stuff happens. Even the other day, we had a fire, it was a... And, you know, it was wet, I'm sure this... But so that's why I'm, I didn't get a lot of input negatively or positively. I didn't, assuming the fire chiefs didn't email me right away after Eli's comments, I am going to assume that they agreed. And I talked to Terry at the sheriff's office, not today, but before this, and I don't think nobody had any will want to put it on. So I'm thinking, because the weather is gonna get cold, winter's coming, put it on now, I'm thinking would shorten it. If we get another, but here's the other thing, too, I found out from state, that if we did get a fire on those forty-five plus thirty-five, those windy days, yeah, no matter what, it's gonna be bad. But if it starts, and we get a disaster, what we would do again is put it on to open up those funds to support our responders. But we could do it even after it starts because it's a disaster. And that's how, you know, where before it was...
So you're not thinking it's an actual necessity to prevent, in case it happens, we can actually, once it starts, put it into effect?
Yes, and, and my concern was that emergency fund for the, you know, for the damage if you could state, yeah, they confirmed that I don't have to do that. Once you declare, it's up to the county. You wanna open up your funds and declare. Because I know years ago, Oliver had a huge fire, and we did declare afterwards so they could get state help. And it did not happen. And I told them basically that's such a... So to put it on just because of the emergency funds isn't why we wanna put it on. We wanna put it on so that people are aware. Like Eli said, you put so many on, people just, they aren't gonna take us seriously when we really need a fire ban on.
Well, and like you indicated, we're already into October right now, mid-October. And, you know, when I looked at the National Weather Index, it looks like we're supposed to have a little bit wetter times now. You know? And we still got green grass out there and stuff, and I think people are definitely using their common sense. And I wanna continue to let them utilize their common sense. So I would support us not having a burn ban right now.
But then, there's always, the bad part is, you know, the, the vehicles have a lot hotter exhausts in the old days. And they're gonna, hunting's coming along here, so they're out there on these darn prairie trails. Like past my place, and there's grass yea-high. And, you know, all it would take is a spark, and, and we've got a big epidemic down there. But I mean we will have more traffic due, due to hunting purpose. I don't know what they're gonna hunt during hunting period.
So outside of a burn ban, like any other emergency, say like Blizzard, is there a timing issue on, on those declarations?
Is, is there any zones?
The only thing is, is if it happens like on the weekends, I have to believe you guys.
It is what it is. But I'm, I'm just saying, like, I mean, I can, I understand where you're coming from, the burn ban. We can do that, like, post-date if there was a, say, a prairie fire started, but...
We don't have to post-date it, it's just, we see we need a declaration. And a lot, in this declaration, we gotta remember, well, number one, when we put burn bans on, that's a war in the public. But I do, the declarations also don't open up emergency funds, but also allow us to get state funding. State cannot help us, like with the state forest service coming in to help us, or them sending water, whatever, any state entities, they need a declaration from the county in order to help us. But I think what Eli's trying to say is, hey, we're gonna put a burn ban on, and if we don't need this declaration for that until something happens, then we put it on. Why are we trying to, and I kind of agree with them, we confuse people, because and I think people are watching that, yes.
So you're saying we would still put the burn ban on, but we just wanna do the declaration?
No, we do both.
We do both, okay.
I'm just saying that instead of putting it on way before, unless we really do have a reason to have it on and have people not burning, we put it on then. But it's tying it to... it to the index, when we don't, it's been green.
Okay, okay.
We don't have a red flag warning on. That's it.
Okay, so we're removing the index portion of it?
We're re-removing everything.
Okay.
Unless.
We would not have any burn ban on.
No burn ban at all, unless it became and then you would put it on for that specific time.
Yeah, if something happened or we see a lot of fires starting, like you said, Wayne, if it does start like that and it dries out, then people.
Do we still have zones? We used to have fire zones.
Those are only if, if, no. Right now, with this state one, there is no zone. It is one county. But we can do that. We can make a fire ban any way we want to, and I know we have.
I would highly, highly suggest, like I said, you get down to my country down there, uh, it's, it's like God's country, but you get something to burn in, it, it has never happened. But where is it gonna quit? I mean, it's just acres and acres and pasture and pasture and pasture. Uh, I'd say that corner down in that dying township, state called them, uh, should be a definite burn ban, because I don't need no idiot thing. Who's gonna pay for my hay when my hay burns up?
I know, Wayne, I, I.
Pay for my pasture when the pasture's burned.
I hear you, but it, a burn ban.
The burn ban isn't gonna prevent?
A burn ban doesn't stop someone from.
It will allow, you know, them to find them. But that's the thing, I'm, I'm kinda just throwing this information. I want you guys to make this decision.
If it's green or up towards the lake, fine, but down there, it is not green.
Wayne, but that doesn't stop someone from dri- driving down the section line?
Well, absolutely. I, I, I hear that. But if somebody wants to, uh, you know, to decide they're gonna have a fire, uh, burn their garbage, well, maybe today isn't the day to burn garbage. And, uh.
Get that, yeah, but.
There's other days, I mean, I have no problem if we got moisture and stuff.
What kinda neighbors you got?
Well, pretty common sense ones, I would say. So, uh, I, I don't know. All I know is it'd be a huge hit for Mercer County and the fire department and those people down there try to get this thing out.
Okay, but like I said, it's okay. I mean, if that's what you guys wanna do, put it on. I'm just, I wanna make sure, and even to take this information and think about it for the future, cause I think Eli had a really good point.
I agree.
Yeah.
And it's a policy change for us. But if you guys wanna keep it on, I am all for that too. I just.
I, I'm tracking what you, what your discussion was. It not tying it to the, to the, uh, fire danger rating. It was, at the time, we declared it because of conditions, but not necessarily due to an index.
But this one, we're gonna have it on if we want it.
We have a burn ban on right now.
Yeah.
So Carmen, right now, we do have a burn ban on, right?
Yes, we do.
Yep.
So if we wanna do this?
And it's tied to the fire index rating, and if that goes higher, higher, or a red flag warning, if it goes winds again, then we'll go into that stage one.
Right, so right now, if we don't do anything, burn ban stays as is?
Correct.
Actually, you need to make a motion to officially approve it today.
Because it was only with those guys before?
Because.
Yeah, because we did it between the three of us so that, yeah.
Temporarily put it on, and that's the way we do it. And then once the first commission meeting, then you guys have to officially.
Yeah, we ratify it at, uh.
So if we don't do anything today, where are we as of nine fifty-one?
Burn ban.
Often you either make a motion to approve it, or you have to make a motion to rescind.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta move one way or the other.
We have to do one or the other.
Confuse, Carmen.
We temporarily put it on.
Yeah.
Not, you, Travis, and Sam temporarily put it on due to the conditions at that time.
Just a second, please. Liza, go ahead, say that again.
Carmen, Travis, and Sam temporarily, temporarily put it on due to the conditions at that time.
Okay, so we do have it?
Right.
It's on.
And we can either decide today.
So either adopt it or rescind.
All of your fires, it's gonna temporarily be the condition.
Can't put three of them, then.
Correct.
Right.
But between you and Travis, you can say, okay, it ends. What you implemented, you can, what you're asking, it would be the commission to either accept what you agree, agreed upon, or deny what you agreed upon.
And I guess just to do the motion to rescind it would be official, but I believe if you guys don't approve it, then it does expire.
That's what, that's the point I was trying to make. If you don't approve it, it expires.
When does it expire?
I just don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna.
Because it's commission meeting.
Yes.
I don't wanna say, well, let's make a motion to rescind something that's gonna terminate anyway. To me, that's kinda like.
Cause I, the reason I say, the reason I ask that question, I don't see no sunset clause. It just, it says it starts, but doesn't say when it ends. But if you're, if that's in fact, indeed the case that if we don't do anything, it goes away?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Because today it would need approval from the commission, if it were to remain.
So then, either we don't, we don't do anything and it goes away, or else we make a motion to approve.
And then until further notice would mean.
Right.
There, that's the understanding I get. Because in between meetings, an emergency comes up.
You guys.
Between you and Travis, you, you can make that decision until the next meeting. Then the commission needs to either, right, gotcha.
And I would, I'd try to call state to confirm, I'm just gonna send things, just covering my bases. Cause our long distance isn't working?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what's yours?
Always something, right?
Yeah.
So is there any need to continue the burn ban, or?
I gave you the information. I can't make a decision. This is, you know, I.
I'm not asking you to make a decision, I'm asking you to give a recommendation.
I see both sides.
Well, I, I think, uh, on my side, I'd say another month, but that's, that's my side. Or else if we got a zone down there, which we used to have zones, uh, I'm just trying to protect the property and the people down in that end of the country, because uh, there, there's lots of vegetation, but it's drier than a cob, I'm telling you. And we just have no moisture, no moisture. Sounds like maybe Sunday, but golly, it just, uh, so for us down there, I think if we could extend it for at least one more month, or you see, yeah. Wayne, unless. Mid-November. Unless you make a motion to that effect, it's gonna go away today.
Yeah. So if you want it to go through the end of November, you could make that in a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that this fire ban will stay on till the end of November. Uh, what kinda date do we have back there?
Thirtieth?
Thirtieth, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Wayne to continue the, um, fire ban through November thirtieth. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'm going to second that for discussion. Any discussion on the motion to extend the fire ban through November thirtieth?
Real quick, just so, if it's approved, then that would mean, it wouldn't mean just an automatic fire rate, it would mean that again, it would be tied to the.
Oh, yeah.
So when it gets to that high or above, then the ban.
Then it's on, otherwise it's.
And then if it fails, then the ban is over?
Correct. But I'm just saying that the ban is in effect. It's not just a permanent ban to November thirtieth, it's a ban if those conditions are.
If it was, right.
Yep, yeah.
I think it's got a lot of weight.
Any other discussion?
As I had noted before, I just feel like it should be a common sense thing for our residents. And there may be a few incidental accidents, as you had addressed, Wayne, but we can't prevent that with a burn ban or a fire ban. There's just nothing we can really do about that. And it's since you said that we can come back into place if we have a disaster, I think we're covered under that. So I don't see the reason for this.
Right. And I, I work with a, with an egg producer and we've got fire suppression equipment out there that, yeah, it's, it's unbelievable the amount of fire suppression equipment we have, because we're, we're fully aware of, uh, the, our harvesters nowadays, I mean, you can hit a rock and spark. And the exhaust systems, um, dust clings to it and then falls off, it can start fires. So we got all kinds of fire suppression. And I think a lot of, uh, producers out there do. So other than someone purposely burning garbage on a thirty mile an hour day, which we, you can have a burn ban in place, that ain't gonna matter anyway. You can't stop them. So it's, it's a matter of collecting or declaring an emergency, which we can do at the ti- at that time. So just a comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'm gonna vote nay. Liza?
Nay.
Marv?
Nay.
Gene?
Nay.
That motion fails, we no longer have a, uh, burn ban in place. Thanks, Carmen.
Thank you for bringing that information, Carmen.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, okay, now, no, I never am.
I think you've used up your lot at month.
Yeah, I know, right? Okay, so, um, this is just an orderly, important thing. Um, but like Travis had a, a question earlier about that grant for the mitigation. And on the second page of this, okay, um, cause I've got the grants. Now, like, we just ended with the twenty-one EMPG and then October first starts the twenty-two, just so you know, we got that grant in place now. And then I did put the amounts that we're gonna receive from the twenty-two EMPG is like forty-eight thousand for Mercer, thirty-two thousand for Oliver. Okay, on the second page is where I've got that multi-hazard, um, plan information. The bills you saw today, I didn't add to this yet, but as you can see, the cost to the contractor up to this point for that bill, and I think that bill was only like twelve hundred. It was like six, so right now, we've paid the contractor up to today about seven thousand dollars. Their contract with us is twenty-four thousand. And I believe after everything gets approved and they're totally done with that plan, they'll charge us the rest of that. So then, um, down at the bottom, I estimate total costs. So I feel, you know, they're gonna charge us the twenty-four thousand. And then ads are gonna be about four thousand and travel, cause I got the rest of this month to go to those cities. So I'm looking budgetary, about five hundred. So total costs I've got. And then I also, federal grant reimbursement will be about seventy-five percent. So then I kinda gave you an idea what the actual cost of accounting is gonna be at the end, even though we have to pay it a lot, just to give you guys an idea of the cost. We'll, we'll get that. But the project has to be totally done, no more bills. And then once that's done, then I take all these bills and submit it, and then they usually pay us back.
And this is the thing that we only have to do every five years?
Yes.
Right?
Right.
And we have to do this to ensure that, like, Bula applied for something, right? Or they needed?
Any FEMA grants, federal grants.
Okay.
Requires the county to have.
A mitigation.
A mitigation plan in place.
Okay.
And, uh, that doesn't mean, you know, they're still gonna help us in a disaster, but, um.
But to actually apply.
If they're mitigation grants, that's why.
Okay.
Are these expenses, are they gonna occur in twenty-twenty-two?
No. These expenses will end, I believe, the next month.
So it'll be, it'll be done in twenty-twenty-two.
If we're done with this project.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fast answer, yes.
Okay. So generally, other questions on, like, my husband, my study?
All right, well, thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome to the party.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thanks, Carmen.
Thanks.
Do we take a break?
You wanna take a five-minute break?
Enjoy the tour.
Yep, let's, uh, let's recess for, um, five minutes and we'll start back up with the roads.
And, yeah, it'll really won't be here either.
How's an hour?
It's worse than having a car, right? Cause you know.
Oh, my word. I, it's, it's just right where the tractor, when you hit it, I had to slow down to like five miles an hour with the tractor.
Seatbelt got stretched and.
Ready to resume, Sam?
And I know that's all Wayne's tractors go.
All right, uh, ten oh six, uh, we'll, uh, call the meeting back to order. Uh, we got road stuff, Charlie's handing out.
Several, couple different documents here. This one's separate from the first bundle of papers I just gave you. This is for the discussion on procurement of a box. Should we decide to do that? Oh, and the public meeting, yeah. So usually we just make sure, we need to make sure we have that in the minutes for the funding on, on box number twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty. And give, I guess, public an opportunity to show up and discuss if they have any questions.
Is that the first or the second handout you gave us?
Uh, neither of those.
It's on the agenda.
It's the first item on the agenda, sorry. So the first item on the agenda, you guys have on their public input meeting for box cover twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty. Um, usually we take the opportunity to discuss the project on that and address any questions from the public, if there is any. Um, we have to show proof that there was an open meeting for the public with, um, the minutes, I guess, from the meeting. And, um, submit that with our, our funding packages that we, we're receiving on that project. So, uh.
For the minutes and clarification, what bridge is that?
That is the one, twenty-nine, one thirty-four, twenty is the bridge that is south of the crossroads, southeast of Hazen, on Mercer twenty.
Okay.
Over Keniman Creek.
When is the expected arrival of that?
The, well, that is the project, um, I provided a probable cost estimate, the second document that I handed you. Um, right now, with a little bit of backstory on this, so the way that the, the state set up with their schedules, the earliest we'll be able to bid that is March of twenty-twenty-three, because of the process involved with the state. This is the one where we got the IIJA funding, grant money, that application that was due back in June, June thirtieth. We submitted it, we got, I forget, eighty percent of, it was like eight hundred thousand dollars is what we're, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, and so, the, where that project currently is, we have contact with the property owners. They're both agreeable to the project in itself, the right of way. It seems like they're agreeable to the terms, the monetary offers that were brought forward. Um, there was one property owner to the south side of the bridge, um, that we are, um, going to try to help control some weed, weed spreading or weed growth. We have a separate agreement with them on that, like, uh, uh, I worked it out with Ken. It's like a one-time spray that they're gonna try to do as a result of this project. Um, nothing crazy. So it, the, the right, the land acquisition part of it is looking really, really good. Um, we are set to, scheduled to have our TSNL meeting. What a TSNL meeting is, is just a meeting with the district and the county, the road superintendent, in the field, at the bridge, and to discuss the project and the planned or recommended structure from the design process and the hydraulic report study that we did. And we have all that done. All the environmental stuff is pretty much handled. The, the hydraulic study is pretty much handled. Um, we have that meeting on the next Tuesday. What is that?
Twenty-fifth, is that?
Twenty-fifth. Yep. Next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, we'll be meeting with the state, the district, I should say, um, their engineering representative in the field. Much similarly like we did with the John, John Shields Bridge, um, no different, same process, we're going through the same things. Um, and then our plans and specs are due by pretty much Thanksgiving. And those are, I mean, we're well ahead of the game on that. We've been working on those for a long time. Those have been pretty much ready to rock and roll for quite a while. Um, but with this funding, we're, you know, we haven't been able to turn them in yet because of a lot of different things that we had to do. So everything's on schedule. The problem is, uh, the quickest we'll be able to bid it is in March. So that being said, I know at the last meeting we were at, we talked about the idea of procurement of the pipe. I guess before I jump onto that, was there any questions on the project itself, for the purpose of the public input meeting? I know there's no one here, but was there any questions from the commission on the actual project? Do you guys have any?
I'm wondering if we should do a motion just to have a public meeting, so that it's documented in the minutes that we had the public meeting.
Sure.
And, and then we'll close it when we, we're done talking about it. But, I mean, that way, there's a definite in the minutes that we had the public input. And and then we'll close it when we're done talking about it, but, I mean, that way, there's definite in the minutes that we had the public input. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So do we have to?
Make a motion to open for a public meeting?
Close this meeting first?
We do that when we do hearings, I guess, is it supposed to be a hearing or just a public input?
Just a public input, so historically, when we've done these, it's just, it's just the opportunity, the floor was given for public input on, on the project.
Mr. Chairman, for protocol, I agree with what you're saying, the question I have is, shouldn't this be in the mi- in the agenda for a public hearing so the public would have known about it prior to us having a public meeting?
It's on the agenda, public meeting.
This is public meeting, it does not say hearing.
I'm not saying it's supposed to be.
These are all public meetings, all of our meetings are public, a public hearing is when the public can come in and testify for it.
Well, I mean, well, let's back up.
So if we have a public hearing at our next meeting, will that delay anything?
No. No, it shouldn't. We we need to have pretty much our design and everything process, uh, buttoned up by, I think it's like December, so, I mean, we got a little bit of time to work with there, it's just
Okay.
Part of the process, I figured I would do it.
Then for cl- for clarification, we'll just have our, the auditor. Put it on next, for next month, put public hearing.
Remember, our date has been changed.
November first, yeah.
And that.
We we can still discuss it, it's on the agenda, but
Yeah.
We just wanna be upfront and, I guess, transparent is the key word.
Sure, yep.
And in our November first meeting will be a special meeting, so, because it's not on a regular day, but.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think you were gonna go, you asked, is there any more questions on it, you're gonna go into the cost of this? That's what this sheet is for?
Yeah, that's the, for the, for the procurement of the box, that was the, that's the purpose of that sheet, so.
And the two, and the two numbers, are they two eighty-eight and a hundred thousand?
Correct, so I had to, I had reached out to, um, Dale at Forterra and asked him what the opportunities or options, I should say, are for, uh, Mercer County or any county for that matter, if they were to decide to procure a box ahead of time in an effort to keep things on track, because this thing's been closed since last October. I think we all remember that, so, um. And our fear, and I think the state would be the first to also agree with this, is that if you bid something in March, contractor puts an order in for a box at that point in time, good luck getting one next year.
Right.
So, i- if the county so chooses on this project, you know, I, you you would, you have the ability to procure the box ahead of time, but I guess, two things, so Dale at Forterra said, yes, this is allowable with the signing of a purchase order agreement. If you were to back out for some reason because the project fell through, or you name it, I mean, anything, right, uh, he made it sound as though that's not an issue. They do not require a down payment, to my knowledge, they do not require full payment upfront, I think it's, um, payment once the box is pretty much made, so, uh, they won't make them until the spring anyway. I think it's probably in the county's best is, interest to to get on that, to sign a purchase order agreement, get on that list, but however, you do this, doing so, knowing the fact that use of local funds is now required and it's non-reimbursable, this is a federal aid project. So if we were to not do this, then this would be getting paid with federal aid dollars, the box itself. We would receive monies from the state to pay for the box. It has been discussed, the use of prairie dog funds to pay for the boxes, totally acceptable, there's nothing wrong with that, to my knowledge. So, yes, you would be using some other source of money, local funds or you know, uh, prairie dog money or COVID money, but in this case, prairie dog money, I think, is what's been discussed. It's not a guarantee you guys are gonna get that money, or is it looking pretty good, I guess, I don't know the latest and greatest on it, but it sounds like December, maybe. You guys are slated to maybe receive a, uh, your biannual, is it biannually you receive that?
Yeah.
Do you know? So, I, I wanted to give you a number, it looks like it's about a total of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's according to our cost estimates, I don't have a specific number from Dale, but he would, that would be provided in the, in the purchase order agreement. But that's a, that's a estimated number based on the engineering estimate of what that cost would be.
Dale is the manufacturer of the box from Forterra?
Correct. Yep.
So what happens if we wait until December to make this decision?
You're just that much further behind on being on the list, I think they, if they treat it, it's almost like a car dealership, you know, you get on a list to have a box made. And if you are, you have a purchase order agreement executed for this, the only way there, you know, if we were to bid this job in November and a contractor bid it and they put, they called up Forterra and said, we need a box for next year, because the bid that, the construction deadline is November fifteenth. They would get put on that list right then and there. No different than what we're trying to do, the only difference is, we're saying, okay, hey, you know, Brian Fuchs and everyone at the North Dakota D O T and the federal aid folks, we understand that you're not gonna give us money for this now because we're doing this, we're procuring this on our own. However, it shouldn't, the hope and the thought here is it's not gonna impact your guys' bottom line, you're out of pocket, because in es- in essence, I should say, it technically impacts everything, but the use of prairie dog money is still, um,
Local fund.
Yeah, it's not taxpayer dollars, right, it's, uh, technically, I guess, it's, uh, it's equivalent of a grant, almost like federal, use of federal aid dollars.
And I want the board to be aware that not giving federal aid for this project doesn't mean that federal aid goes away, it's still there for the next project.
Well, we would still receive federal aid for everything else.
Everything else, but I'm just saying that.
But it would adjust the monies from the eighty-twenty.
Yep. Everything else. Correct. Yep.
But if you use the prairie dog money, that doesn't count towards your twenty percent?
Correct. That's the difference in the, so this is a, this is an eighty-twenty, this is a, this, this federal aid money, this I I J A funding is an eighty-twenty split, because this is on a, um, uh, uh, C M C route. So the C M C routes are your federal aid routes, so anytime there's a structure that's being worked on, on a federal aid route, their funding packages give, provide an eighty-twenty split. Twenty percent local share, non-C M C, non-federal aid routes are eligible for one hundred percent grants, this is not the case on this one.
If we order this bridge, bridge today for the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, if I understood you right, Dale from Forterra said that they wouldn't start building it right now anyhow, and we wouldn't have to pay for it till it was built.
Correct, or they can't, yeah, they can't stay, so they'll start making it in the spring, or when they start making all the other boxes for ne- you know, for next year, essentially. It's, I guess, the best way I could explain it, it's like getting in line at a Ford dealership, you know, waiting for your
Well, what I'm looking at is, we don't have an official quote.
I mean, we we could authorize Charlie to get quotes on it Right.
And make a formal decision, but this dollar amount, we can't just do a sole source, so you're gonna have to call Forterra and then whoever else makes those, and then we would actually have
And.
Quotes to approve or not take.
Yeah, what I'd probably do there is work with the road department, I'd probably have Ken do that directly with them, since it's, you know, as opposed to having interstate engineering interject in that process, I'd probably have Ken work with them directly, just to get a, um, purchase order agreement between the county and the, and Forterra. And then see what that is, and probably present it at the November first meeting.
You think you would, you think you'd have it back here by then, November second?
Yeah.
November first, yeah.
Yeah.
We moved it up a day.
Okay, or do we wanna do it the sixteenth?
I think the first.
I would agree with that.
I would, I think the first.
Yeah.
The sooner we do it, the better, is, I guess, my opinion.
Didn't know he'd get there and get in information back in time.
Yeah.
In two weeks.
Uh, yeah. I think we'll be all right.
Yeah, so, in- instruct Ken, because he's not here, that we would need
Okay.
Multiple quotes, just because of the dollar amount? Like, if it was under two hundred thousand, we could take a sole source.
We, well, we can, we, here's the other thing about that, too, and you bring up a good point, I haven't, I haven't attempted to reach out to reinforced concrete products out of Rapid City. They provide products, now, you would think that they would cost more because of the Rapid City with the, you know, the freight, but I don't believe that's necessarily the case, from what I've been hearing, you know, on their product, and they provide a really, really nice product, I've heard really, really good things about them without going down that rabbit hole.
Right, and the other thing is, if they decide not to quote on it, reporting that they declined to quote is a secondary quote.
Right.
Yeah, there's several, I could think of four, actually, three other additional ones off the top of my head that we can try to reach out to. And just see, A, do you have a similar process to Forterra? Would you, you know, allow for us to basically pay for this when it's built, or do you need something right away? I could assist with Ken with going through that process and trying to get some numbers. Because it's, it's entirely possible one could be cheaper than the other by how much, I don't know, but, yeah.
Get those numbers in, we'll be able to make a decision.
Decision.
Yeah.
Yep. We'll shoot for the first on that, I think that that's achievable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I have just a off-the-wall question, are there any weight restrictions on any of these bridges when they get replaced?
The boxes, no.
Okay.
It's the beauty of them. But, yeah, so, um, speaking of weight restrictions, because what, I mean, that kinda leads me into uh, the next, the next two, technically, the next two items are the same, they're, they're one and the same. I didn't look at the, and I apologize, I didn't look at the agenda before I sent in the request to have that added, so it looks like it was kinda listed on there a little bit, like, twice almost, so, this bridge on Mercer seventeen, that's that other package that I provided you guys. So what you'll see is, there's a, there's an estimated cut, project cost, there's a map that's shown and with the bridge location, and then the third one is just the D O T's, um, roadmap that shows C M C routes, federal aid routes versus non-federal aid routes. This bridge is on a federal aid route, twenty-nine, seventeen, which all that tells us is
It's possible to get the eighty-twenty.
It's eighty-twenty, right? Grant money is not available until twenty-twenty-six. And that, I'm not, I'm not kidding, that's the, so the first round, or slew of, um, applications that went through June thirtieth and the deadline that we talked about, those, uh, those monies are not available until twenty-twenty-six between, for the bridge replacement program, um, which is what this one would fall under, so what I had, what I'm advising the county to consider at this, we have C V D, COVID funds, C V D money, uh, to the tune of eighty-one, eighty-two thousand bucks, I believe it is. And in order to receive that money, we have to go through the same, same process you would anytime you would get, try to, try to, to get federal aid dollars for the use of, of design engineering. Or any project, really, but design engineering fees, what you must do is you must work directly with the state on solicitation of an R F P for, they call it P E services, preliminary engineering services, which is an acronym essentially for design, okay? So, in order to do that and get your C V D funds that you have set aside for you guys, which is, again, eighty-one or eighty-two thousand bucks, which would be more than enough to cover the design of this and have this thing shovel-ready, okay, it'd be ready to go. In the event that some funding, um, allocations are, a project falls through and they reallocate funding, they reallocate dollars, we are, we would then be well-positioned to receive those dollars, we would still submit the application for those monies, it's due in December, I have the application, I'm more than happy to do that, I plan on doing it anyway for this project for you guys. Because this one is unique in the sense that it's a bridge, it's over the Spring Creek, it's in the Hundred Year Floodplain, Zone A. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna have to be a bridge when it's replaced, and this is the estimated cost of what it's gonna take to get it put back in. There's ice, ice damming buildups and problems like that over there in that floodplain, so the problem with this one is more so the tributary area is so large, it's a federal aid route, hundred-year events need to be considered in the regression equations, there's a lot into this where you you can't use a box, because it's simply too big of a flow area that you would have to cover. So we, we did some preliminary looking at it, and you're, you're looking at a bridge, for sure, on this project. So, that being said, you're gonna wanna get grant money, right, we don't wanna try to do this out of pocket. We have grant money available, I call it grant money, COVID money available, but we have to go through this process of soliciting an R F P for P E services through the state. And that is something that you guys do directly with them, um, us as your consultant, we're not allowed to be involved in that process because it's a conflict of interest. But what you would do is, it would then be advertised through the state and then the local paper, and then you know, we'll certainly submit on it, right, but whatever you get in, then you must, uh, host or have, um, interviews with any candidates, I think if you get more than three, then you have to have at least three interviews at a minimum, I have the, I have the, the rules that I can share, I'll probably send them to you, Marv, of the, the step-by-step process of what this takes, and I'll share it with Ken as well. You know, the R F Ps are pretty cut and dry, and and there, those won't be difficult to put together at all, so the thought behind this is, it's not gonna cost you guys really anything, because the COVID money is yours to use and it needs to be used before Sep- September of twenty-twenty-three, I think it is, anyway?
Twenty-four, what?
Twenty-four? Okay, so, this is a great use for that money, this was actually recommended by Brian Fuchs at the state when we had our meeting with him at the Association of Counties. That way you are positioned and ready to rock and roll. Should money all of a sudden become available and you guys can be handed some grant money, we'll still apply for the actual grant. The I I J A grant, this is different, so there's gonna be two different monies used here, but they're both, you know, federal, forms of federal aid. But whatever, however you, you know, however tricky and unique you have to get to not spend money, I mean, that's what we're trying to help figure out for you, so.
Charles, uh, when you send me that information, copy all the commissioners on that?
Sure.
And what I would recommend is that we all look at that and we discuss that again, I'm agreeing with Ken, uh, Charles, we, we talked about this quite a bit down at the meeting being, uh, adapting our requests so that we can get stuff on time due to the long lead times and so on. So, let's send it to everybody, and let's have that part of our hearing discussion at our next meeting. And we'll, Tony has to send this in.
Yeah, and it, again, it's entirely possible that money's not available until twenty-twenty-six for the actual construction of it. I'm not gonna pretend that that's not, I mean, that's entirely possible, and as a matter of fact, it's probably likely, but at least you're, if you do this, you're kind of two birds with one stone, you're getting it shovel-ready. So in the event that money becomes available, you can jump on it, or, you know, at least state your case to Brian Fuchs and have, ask him to, you know, consider reallocation to Mercer County, and then the number two thing is, it's good use of that C V D money that we have sitting out there.
If we get this engineered in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and we we can't answer the phone. If we get this information engineered and we can't do the project till twenty-twenty-six, would it possibly have to be reevaluated under preliminary engineering?
No. No.
Okay, I just don't wanna get double cost on it.
Nope, it's a fantastic question, but the reason I say no on that is unless unless, for unforeseen circumstances where something drastic happens to this floodplain, because that's the only thing really that was driving, would drive the alterations or differences in, in structure type, span, deck length, anything like that, abutment type, style, would be anything that would, and that's just not, that's just not gonna happen, right? So, um, anything short of that, no.
Are we required to put the bridge in at the same elevation due to this floodplain ruling and the water flow? Because right now, the water goes over the top of it.
No. No, and I think that's part of the issue, that's part of what's gonna have to be looked at.
Because it took, it cleaned the guardrails and everything off that back of that gate. Needs to go up, up.
There could be a grade raise with, involved with this project, I mean, this, this is an estimate. That, uh, I, one point one three million, it could be one point four if there, if there's significant earthwork involved with it, I mean, that's just
I looked at, the bridge is sixty feet long, and from the bottom of the bridge down to the water, I'm gonna guess is about sixteen feet, so there's a lot of flow that can go through there.
It's a, a very, very large amount of water.
But, that bridge could actually, if we wanted to raise it to the elevation of the road on both sides, it could raise almost ten feet, it looks like.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yep, because it's in a sag curve.
Yeah.
So if you're, anytime you So, if you're, anytime you, but anytime you're doing a grade raise, you know, you're, you're looking, horizontally, your footprint gets larger. Our impact with, with the folks at Corps of Engineers and FEMA gets a little more tricky, and the modeling becomes a little more unique, I guess we could call it that.
I think it would be very drastic, because right now, if there's a sixteen-foot distance from the, from the bottom of the creek to the bottom of the bridge, we raise it ten feet, now you've, the structure's way higher.
Right.
So, I'm not sure that's practical, but I'm just asking the questions.
You'll notice, and I, well, I guess, the general rule of thumb with visiting with my colleagues on this internally about a bridge is, is it's about fifteen thousand dollars per linio foot of bridge for the structure. So, that's a good rule of thumb for you to, just, just to remember that by. So, if you have that in your mind, I guess, as you approach this, if you go from a sixty-foot bridge to an eighty-foot bridge, I don't, you know, you, you could be adding an extra, what, hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, something like that, to the cost of the bridge. Add an additional twenty feet, so.
How would that change the load rating? Could you still get the same load rating going from sixty?
It would just, that would, yeah, you, that's all, that all, that was all dependent on your girders and your beam, your beam, the design of the actual structure itself, the superstructure.
Would eighty-foot be, bridge have to have a center post in it?
Potentially.
Potentially, huh?
Depends on the design. I'm not a bridge guru, that's our structural group, I wish they were here to answer that for you, but I would assume that might, would potentially need to be considered, yeah.
Well, again, the old guy wouldn't be raising this, you know, ten feet higher, you know, you'd probably split, split the difference, and just try to get minimum, and you got icebreakers that you put on them and everything else.
Well, and see, the other thing too, this bridge, I think, it's, their abutments are vertical, vertically, and they enter the water vertically, which is not allowed anymore, even on standards, when DOT doesn't even allow that, and it promotes, helps promote ice, ice jamming and damming, and it, it, it's problematic. They prefer to see some in slopes before they see the abutments enter the, you know, there's a lot going on there, on that bridge, I guess.
As a side note, so anyhow, can we discuss this further at, what's the board want? Do you want to bring this up at our hearing also and talk about it some more? I'm in favor of pursuing this RFP and getting this stuff in advance.
I, I guess that's the request, I think that that, yeah, I, am I, and as your consultant, our opinion is that that is definitely a direction you guys should go, and use, utilize of CBD funds to, to get this thing ready.
Okay, so you're gonna send us all the information about the rules to apply for this, and...
Yep.
There's nothing we can do until we get those, until I look at those rules, right?
Draft RFP, I mean, we've, we've seen those, we, we can, I mean, yeah, that's supposed to be something that you guys put together, and we're supposed to stay out of that whole process, but I at least can share the rules with you guys, you know, or, I won't, rules, the guideline.
Guidelines, so send us the guidelines, and if you're not supposed, I just want the board to be aware of something else, is that if we don't follow the guidelines, and we don't do this correctly, there's a chance that we won't get any state paid.
Well, it already happened, yeah, it already happened to us on the bridge over northwest Golden Valley. So, the way we went about that was we helped you guys solicit that, and the state said, no, you can't do that, that's a conflict of interest, which makes a lot of sense. And so, we, we weren't given federal aid for construction engineering services on that project as a result of that.
So, just saying, we want to do this correctly.
Yes, I think we need to wait until we get the parameters, then we need to make a decision on how we're gonna follow those.
Yeah.
So, we make sure you stay out of it.
Well, we basically have to direct Ken's group to, to apply for it.
Yeah. That, that's, yeah, I would, yeah, that's how I would do it, I guess.
Now, I'm gonna throw, I'm, I think this is appropriate. Many years ago, when that road was altered after the bridge was basin transload, the information at that time is that the bridge was gonna have to be improved upon due to the truck traffic that they were imposing on it, and they agreed that they would share that cost.
I remember that.
So...
You mentioned that before, I remember.
We need to investigate all the minutes of basin transload regarding the improvement and maintenance of that road, to see if we can get some compensation from them. They agreed to that, whether it's in the minutes or wherever it's at, that was discussed.
It sounds pretty good, but uniquely, they sold the globe now, so.
Doesn't matter, we need to investigate what we heard at that time to see if there's anything that we can recover.
Is there a starting point on, does anybody remember what year?
Twenty-ten to twenty-twelve.
Well, it was, the commissioners that were on would have been Lyle Latimer and Frank Bitterman.
Because I lived over there when that occurred, when they changed that road.
And me. So, they had an onsite, that road was rebuilt, so it, it tied in, if you can find that part, you're, you're really close. So, when did you think that was, Marv?
Twenty-ten to twenty-twelve. I would say twenty-ten, I'm quite sure, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, I moved away in twenty-twelve. The road was modified completely at that time.
Was rebuilt completely, right, yeah.
And if you look at the road, it's wider than typical county road, and they were gonna maintain it, and anyhow, let's see what we can find to see if there's anything that we can recoup from that original agreement, and that'll be part of the hearing, too.
Because you're, you're absolutely, you're absolutely right, they, they had, they had their finger in the operation there on that particular project, so, yeah, good idea.
Anything else, Charlie?
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks. No problem.
Looking forward to seeing those rules, and I might come see you next week.
Yep, absolutely.
Walk through them.
More than happy to help, yeah, more than happy. Stop on by, we can run through it.
And I might bring Ken along and...
Sure.
See if we can get a draft to help the board move along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you, Charlie.
All right, treasurer, cast the checks, Don?
Marnie.
Marnie.
Mine is easy. I have two checks that I need to send to unclaimed property, and I have one that's a reissue to somebody who can't find the original, and I just need you guys' permission to cancel the three and rewrite checks.
Okay, that seems...
So, move.
Motion by Wayne to cancel those checks and reissue, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion?
Which one is the reissue?
The one to Mercer County Abstract, the other two are going to unclaimed property.
And what happened to these checks?
They sign a, well, the people that want the reissues sign an affidavit kind of thing that says that they have lost them or can't find them, and so we stop payment on them, and then we reissue to them. Unclaimed is just that, we can't find people to do anything with them, so we're gonna send them where they need to go.
Any other discussion? Sinan, Wayne?
All vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Okay, and I don't know if this can be brought up, did anybody have any questions on the treasurer's report? Not on the agenda, don't know if it can be talked about, but I thought I'd ask.
I guess it, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have any questions, but I didn't know it was gonna not be here, so typically, we review this the first meeting of every month, so can we table it till then?
Yep, I will have a new one for you then.
All right, appreciate it, because then it shows the end of the month, too. Thank you, okay?
All right, thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don. All right. Do we want to resume the bills, or just go to the other business and do the bills last?
Continue on.
Continue on, okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, so let's get, uh, NADACO convention?
Okay, I asked that to be put on here, because I wanted to cover some stuff that was mentioned at that convention. One of the things that they brought up, and I brought it up in February, and I brought it up again in September, is that our ARPA funds need to be on separate funds. And I've asked that, I made those motions prior to, and both of them died. I want the board to reconsider that, and I don't need to make them today, taking action on it, but I just want you guys to reconsider it. We do have ARPA fund for the federal aid, and that appears to be working pretty well. The question that we have is on the state federal aid, which is House Bill fifteen-oh-five. By putting that money into the township roads, it's hard to tell which project is gonna be divided up amongst. And if you, it rolls into the township roads, and it rolls in, I mean, goes into township roads, then it rolls into county roads, and then out of county roads, we pay eight projects, I'm assuming, just guessing. So, what part of that town, of that ARPA money goes to each one of those eight projects? It could be hard. So anyhow, it's recommended, and I believe he even said that most of the counties have done this, so I'd like to put that on there for our next meeting for you guys to, let's discuss it.
Okay.
And also, this was a different meeting, it had to do with, I'm not sure if fraud is the right word, but the lady that was there, very educated, very trained, and she gave a very good presentation on ways to track your funds to prevent loss of, due to fraud or misuse. And she kind of hinted that our COVID money should also be in a separate fund. That's where they're finding a lot of the fraud, is the handling of COVID monies, because it got just dispersed right into the general fund, and that's where there, a lot of cases they're finding were, the misuse of the abundance of federal monies at this time is occurring. So, just thought I would mention that, that's two things that they brought up at that convention. The third one had to do with, this is, the third one, I want to show whoever wasn't there, had to do with our pension fund, and there, if we can get the state to make a rather large contribution into that, we can possibly save it, the way I understood, I have the numbers written down at home. They gave a very good talk, it was very worthwhile, extremely educational, and that's all I wanted to bring up during, to the convention. I'd like the ARPA funds and COVID monies to be put on the next agenda, please.
Okay. Liza, you were at the convention, anything you wanted to, or you could do it in portfolios, too, I guess, but have you had any comments from the convention?
I just, when I went into like the breakout sessions in the afternoon, and I sat in on the HR director one, and I think there's a lot that we need to work on with our HR area, but I wasn't gonna bring that up till next year, until we start a fresh new year.
Sounds good. I was there, too, and I went to some of the same ones that Marv did, but I thought it was a good convention, and they said it was the largest attendance that NADACO had ever had for that convention, so that was a good sign, considering they didn't have one two years ago. But, that being all on the NADACO convention, North Dakota State Fair delegate, do we have an applicant?
I didn't get any applicants, but we did receive the letter from, from the, I guess, the North Dakota State Fair.
Okay.
Renee Porcelain manager, so she said that, she did send us a reminder that we needed to choose one, or...
Appoint one.
Appoint one. Last year's was Gary Cannell.
And he has been for twenty-plus years, I would say, maybe even longer, but, I mean, I don't know if he's still interested. Um, is there a deadline to have that delegate?
Yes, they wanted it by November sixteenth.
November sixteenth?
Oh, that's, that's the actual meeting.
Oh, okay.
He didn't call you?
Included, a delegate who wasn't writing, including your signature by October fifteenth, so we passed that date.
Okay.
I'm sure he's still gonna, he'd still be interested.
Okay.
Get a hold of him.
Reach out to him.
So, we should nominate him, basically? See if he'll do it.
Please, and then if we get his, and then if he says, like, go ahead.
I agree, yep. I nominate Gary Cannell to the North Dakota State Fair as a delegate.
Okay, motion by Marv to nominate Gary Cannell as the North Dakota State Fair delegate, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean, any discussion? Sinan, Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
All vote aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Okay, auction house?
I just want to give you guys an update that neither I or Todd have received any information, and it's been past the thirty days that we sent them a letter requesting their appearance or respond, response, so.
And who is they?
That was Ron Boyko, the city of Stanton, and Linda, and Chip Erickson.
When we sent the notice to Linda and Chip, they're the ones that are interested in possibly getting it, right?
Correct.
Did we send it registered, and how do we know that they received it?
It was an email, and she responded back.
Okay, thank you. She responded how?
Through an email.
I know, what's she saying?
Well, because Todd's, Todd's request was to ask her and Chip what they were interested in, or what they were gonna do with the property, and she said that they were gonna turn it into possibly a, well, work on some, like, street appearance, and, and also maybe possibly show off some local art or something in the, in the building, so.
So, they're still interested in purchasing it then?
And they, just for the council, they do have a change of mayor, Ron is no longer the mayor, Tom Saylor, I believe is appointed, does that sound right?
Yeah, I know it was Tom, I just, I can never remember his last name, but Saylor sounds right. And I did talk to Ron a couple times about this over the last couple weeks, and he was trying to get his attorney and our attorney to discuss it and talk about it, but, I don't know, I mean, it's one of those things, we have a contract for it to be tore down, that contract's over a year old.
That was gonna be my question, is that, is he still gonna live up to that? He can't have a, I don't know if there's a deadline on the contract, but most contracts, you can't go two, three years later.
Right.
Usually a thirty, thirty to sixty day.
I guess we kind of need Todd's legal direction on how we should proceed with it, so if, if Todd doesn't have anything for us at the next meeting, I think we have to probably enforce that contract.
Ask him to resubmit.
Yeah.
There have been very large cost increases last year due to this type of work, so the way I look at, we'd ask him to reevaluate his contract.
Is there any way we can put that property on the auction we have on November fifteenth? It's just a question, I don't know if we can or not.
Yeah, I'd have to look into it, I mean, and also get probably Todd's, I mean, I know that you and I had talked about maybe possibly putting the...
Social service building in there?
Services building. So, that's something that I could get with Todd and, and also look and see if we can add those.
Yeah, at the next, have that on the topic for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna hold an auction, and we have properties...
We would have to make it a decision that day to that next meeting, if that's what we're gonna do, because of the auction will be...
Right, and then we'd also have to set a minimum.
Yeah.
So, you have to visit with Cindy, too, on that.
Okay.
Cindy would, would get us the minimum, Todd would get us the legality.
Yep.
Good, good suggestion.
Okay. Solar ordinance?
Legal question. Mike, I, or the committee for the solar ordinance, for a committee to meet, I have to post when we're having our meeting and the agenda. I have a tentative meeting set up for Friday at ten AM, we just got this email this morning, we're both, it's fall, we're working, or he's working on a ranch and other things. But, the question is, how much notice do you guys, do we have to have to hold these meetings? I can send the agenda and the meeting notice to Samantha, and Mike has indicated several days next week...
And Mike has indicated several days next week, and I have to check my schedule that we can meet. So, I wanna hold a meeting. How much notice do I have to give? So that I can legally hold a meeting. That's my question.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, but I think it's gonna be fair, I, I don't think much, I mean, it's different when it's a committee than when it's a board. I mean, like I was thinking like schools. And when all, when the school board meets, that's one thing, but when all of their different policy committees and personnel committees meet, I think that can, I think there is notice, maybe on the seven, it's, it's, there's a note there, necessarily in the paper, but it's
From what?
Right, if you do it right before the meeting, I think I would, I would, you know.
That's the information that I have, and from what I understand, once I send this to our auditor and she posts it on the website, I'm ready to go.
Yeah.
I, I would think so, but you want to chat.
And then if you have like future dates, it could be discussed at that meeting and then posted.
In the minutes.
Three, eight minutes and then posted until the next meeting. So like the first one, probably fairly short notice, but on the other ones, like if you're gonna meet in two weeks, we just posted that in.
First meeting's gonna be Friday at ten AM. Country Kettle?
Friday?
Twenty first?
Country Kettle.
Country Kettle. And the agenda is review of solar ordinance information.
At what time?
Ten AM.
Okay. Good on that one, Mike?
Yep. Our goal is to do this in three meetings.
Okay.
First meeting is gonna be two hours, so. It's real, it's rather aggressive, but we have a lot of it done.
Okay. Uh, Gene, portfolio updates?
I have nothing.
Okay, Marv?
I gave mine with already, thank you.
Okay, um, the annual meeting for the Fair Board is next Tuesday, uh, the twenty fifth. And, um, as always, when they have their annual meeting, there's always, um, positions available because they have a three-year term and they have a rotation, so they usually do, um, four new, um, board members every year. Some of the ones were, um, short terms, but I think they're all on, now on their, um, three-year, um, process. So there'll be four, four positions open, if anybody's interested. Um, they'll do that at the Civic Center and I believe it's five thirty. And then, um,
What date was that again?
October twenty fifth. Let me double check here, I can give you the time. Thought I had it in my calendar, I gotta look at my email. Six thirty PM, October twenty fifth, Beulah Civic Center. And I had a library board meeting at the end of September. Everything's proceeding normal with the library board. And that's all the updates I have. Liza?
Sam has hired DC in her office. And I know that, um, she's getting ready for election. And please remember that our next meeting is adjusted due to look back so people can come in for our, yeah, an early vote Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Noon to seven. Noon to seven. So the community, make sure the community is aware, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, noon to seven PM, you can do an early vote. And I wasn't able to make it to the ambulance meeting and Carmen was already in here and that's all I have.
Okay, Wayne?
Um, I've got a couple of things. First of all, we, uh, the weed board met the other night at seven o'clock at the Beulah Civic Center. And basically they purchased about ninety-five percent of our chemical for next year now. Because some of that chemical's gone up like ten dollars a gallon. And roughly, just to say, we run through eight hundred and some gallons of chemical with, with cost share and, and what we use as the weed board, so. And we, uh, and we're very fortunate. Senix up there is gonna store the chemical for the weed board, it's in a heated building. And, uh, that's a big plus for us because otherwise we'd either have to find somewhere to, to store our chemical, we can't let it freeze, so. And, um, and we have a resignation, uh, from District Seven over here, which was, uh, I think, uh, Leo, my head been showing, I, um, Free, uh, yeah, Freeze's brother. Cargus.
Oh.
Uh, Royal, right?
Royal?
Royal, yeah. Has, uh, indicated the, that he's, uh, is getting off the board. So, uh, the board has been doing some advertising and this and that, so we have a candidate, uh, one candidate open for Region Seven, which is over on this east side here. I don't have a map before me, but anybody interested, uh, call Brad, I guess. Inform you.
We did, we did submit a public notice for that too, so he'll be in favor.
Okay, okay. I didn't know how far I went already, but yeah. And, uh, I visited with Jim this morning, Elbers. Uh, roughly, uh, I got some notes here of the project. Our lighting system's roughly about ninety-eight percent complete. And, uh, so that's, that's good, that's installed. Uh, dropped down our VC, uh, air handling, uh, downstairs, they put new motors in there, they put some new squirrel cage style blowers in there that, and, uh, new motors. So that's all refurbished there. They just, I got to see, I don't know if it's on this list, but anyhow, our sewer, our lift station pumps are installed and, uh, running. And it's a real slick unit. Uh, you can disconnect and pull them right up and there it is, right on the floor for you, and basically the discharge is all plastic and, uh, and they got alarms on there if the, if the, uh, pump goes down, or well, there's two pumps, but if something goes wrong, there's alarms that alarm, uh, dispatch upstairs even, right? Yeah? So, pretty slick system, very up to date and, and, uh, the, uh, air handlers for, uh, the rooftop units, they're on order. They, not sure when they, they will arrive. But, uh, whenever it does, it does. And anyhow, they figured, uh, about thirty-five percent of this project is complete. So, pretty well, that's where we're at.
Is he still looking for an employee too, or not?
Yes, Jim is still looking for a full-time, uh, janitorial employee. That was advertised in the, yeah, in, in the paper here and he hasn't quite been able to fill that position, so. Yeah. And I think that's, uh, we had airport meeting, but, uh, uh, that was pretty well just some, basically there was some engineering, some grass washing that had to be redone and stuff and, and they got that completed, so we're we're up, up and running like, like normal, so. I think that's it.
Okay.
Sorry, it took me a little longer.
Fine, okay, let's, uh, finish going through the bills and then that'll be our
That's my job. It's my job.
No. Do you wanna put, uh, like from what point to what point, I guess, or where you were going for your mileage or?
Is activism.
Is this for the, for the Dago convention?
Okay.
It's on, I wrote down the Dago convention.
Right there, yeah.
We reserved the room in advance.
So when?
We got there and it was, they couldn't find us any utilities.
Oh.
The county's portion of it.
Yeah, that was good. You don't have your account number?
That'll be do.
We'll add it. Huh?
Not my county card, is it on there?
I don't think so. Did you grab? Definitely, thank you. The, um, agenda for the solar ordinance, were you gonna create one and then I could post it, or do you want me to just go ahead and put something together and then post it?
The, the agenda is, I thought I gave it to you. Just review solar ordinance information.
Yeah, so you just want me to put something together and then post it, a notice?
Just whatever I gave you, I think that's all you posted, all you needed.
All you gotta do is solar ordinance meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that should have been sufficient.
Are they gonna start buying number one?
I don't have too much.
I don't know, we two on that, huh?
Uh, they'll be fine this week.
When we did the windmill, there was actually quite a bit of attendance at different times.
Yeah, tires, 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 tires.
I know.
They'll get those semi ones away today.
No. Notice that?
Ooh, ooh.
You hide it too.
These are gallons basically.
Oh, is that the, uh, washer fluid, cause it says negative thirty-five in it.
Oh. They gotta fill that up.
Yeah, they're good on the washers, but they haven't got number one yet.
Well, you know, in steps.
Yeah. I get that I'm holding, they make number one available maybe.
It's here.
It's here?
Does it?
Yeah.
Some guys, since he was hollering, get a reorder.
Gloves.
I use hollers, but I also.
Do you buy gloves lately? Do you buy gloves lately? Jesus.
January, it was in hospital, after I was in Heather jungle. So, it, uh,
Look at the number of parrots and look at the cost. Did a pretty good job with it. Purple color.
You used to be, uh, buy your own damn gloves.
This was a convention, um, several.
Soon they're gonna have five pounds.
Should do.
She asked me.
I bought your thongs already.
Sam and I looked into it.
Okay. I should remember from last year.
I don't know if it's.
Maybe we didn't do it from last year because
We didn't have.
We didn't have that person, right?
This is for blinker fluid.
Looks like antifreeze, it says minus fifty on it.
Talking about purple pilot?
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was the washer fluid that's, that
I thought it was bright.
It was negative thirty-five?
Is that what?
Washer fluid, cause it's only like three bucks a job, isn't it?
It says minus fifty.
I thought it said minus thirty-five. It's, it was, it was a negative number.
Something to do with cold.
Yeah. That's why we were talking about number one over here. Number one diesel.
I went to fill up the pickup and I was telling you, and kids pull out the pump, I says, is that number one or number two? He said, I don't know. I said, I guess I need to know that.
Well, either you overpaid or you're okay.
No, I don't want number one in here yet.
That's what I mean.
I don't need number one.
What's that?
Rarely do you need number one.
But when you do, you do.
When you're stranded on the highway in a cold windy day.
And don't, don't stop the conker because he won't know what they had in there. He, he really doesn't, I don't know, Doug, does it?
He can't tell you a percentage?
He don't know the percentage. Senix, when you have a number one pump, I'll give her all the things. You know, the hazen.
Yeah, the hazen, they thread the pump. Into twenty-five, fifteen, seventy-five.
I wish I went up.
The old dipper pilot. It has a blender pump.
These newer vehicles, heaters and stuff that they got on, and in the back floor is pretty high too.
The winner gonna pick up some farm.
Yeah, yes.
You put it in, did it in there?
In the semi.
Does he, number one died?
If it's gonna be really good below zero. Then I, don't miss salad, drive, go on highway. Keep air filters up to date in here, pretty good. That's what usually gels up. As I said, when it gets negative, uh, you're driving down the interstate, look at those plates and trucks that are over Texas, Florida, Alabama. Just drive down the road with them. Filter wrench and slow down. Turn off the filter, dump it in, charge a hundred bucks and they'll be on the way. I like that.
I guess we're hit too old to pawn the middle of the driver anymore.
Yeah, can't use a sledgehammer anymore. I'd rather post ponder.
You ever see those big round wooden post ponder ballots they used to have? They had about that big around.
You slide across the post?
No, it's a hammer.
And people would use them for steel posts, there'd be big chunks missing, uh, cause it's a very soft, you know? It was made for the old wooden posts.
Yeah, I had to go fast. The hammer.
You haven't, you haven't had fun until you've fenced.
Until what?
Until you've done fencing.
I put up so many miles of fence, I can't even count it anymore.
Wrap your leg around the post, that's how you hold it. Pause it with the sledgehammer.
There was a time when my grandpa, my dad and my brother were fencing and a neighbor come by and said, guys having fun? And my grandpa goes, well, if this is fun, we're having it. guys having fun, and my grandpa goes, well, if this is fun, we're having it.
Yeah, I thought that's what it was with the bounty. Yeah.
I visited an old neighbor by Taylor, North Dakota, yesterday, and we were talking about hunting, 'cause we were coming in his area.
What is it, Willing, Willing Teen Trust, what is that again? I remember us talking about it, I can't remember.
The what?
It's like
Oh, that's our grant, our, that's the building project, our expansion, that's the, oh, payment.
The bond payment, okay.
For the bond payment, for when we expanded the plan.
Is that a biannual or an annual?
I've seen it before.
Yeah, I think it's biannual, I'd have to ask Wayne just to double check, yeah.
Most bonds are biannual, so.
Thank you.
Picking that one up?
Yeah, it caught my eye too.
Oh, oh, I, I, I knew my glasses weren't that bad. Small print, but I still could see. That's right, Gene will fall off his chair when it's over there.
He didn't give you a chance to figure it out.
Took a while for me. Just curious, buddy.
Seem like you're on edge.
Yeah, I did twice. This is the mileage, that's the motel.
They can see kinda spinning and smoking up there, squealing.
Gee, nothing, but working hard.
Last but the least.
I'm ready to agree with this one, Wayne.
Some of these questions I hate to ask him. We got a watch engraving, what's that for?
Um, there's a gentleman from the road department who's retiring. He was also at the sheriff's department. What's his name, his name, no, I'm sorry, I don't know everybody at the road department. Let me go ask Wayne.
Now she's like, everybody's looking.
Not sure that's allowed.
We've gotten quite a few people, depending on their years of service.
Elected officials, we've been doing it, but not for appointed officials, but I've been aware. You see some of these questions you don't wanna ask.
Roger's saying.
Roger's retiring? Gee, I can get into it. Tool haul business, lighting, electrical, rally business, put some washboards.
I think you should do some tire business.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve bills as presented.
Okay, motion by Gene, is there a second?
Second. Go ahead, Liza.
Uh, second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Although I, that motion passes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We don't usually do a motion, but making adjourn, see everybody on the first.
Good, good luck combining with your fire suppressant.
Gene is waiting.
Yeah. Any, any, okay.
Are you gonna stop by and sign these ones? Okay.